...candidate tonight. Please silence your cellphones during tonight's session. Many people have asked what Citizens for Nonpartisan Politics stands for. Annie Hansen will now give a brief explanation of C N P. Annie, Annie, please.
Good evening. I'm Annie Hansen. I'm one of the members of C N P. Thank you for attending the 2013 Candidates Night in Stowe, Rock Falls, sponsored by Citizens for Nonpartisan Politics. I'd like to take this opportunity just to tell you a little bit about our organization. But first, some background information. Some cities elect their political leaders in a partisan fashion. This means that candidates compete in party-nominating primaries, and their party affiliation appears with their name on the ballot. This is the system we're all familiar with. This is how we elect our president, our congressional members, our state and county officials. In Stowe, however, we participate in nonpartisan elections. In a nonpartisan election system, candidates do not run in party-nominating primaries, and ballots do not list a candidate's party affiliation. Instead, when candidates run for a particular office, they all run together, whether they're from the same party or an opposing party, and this is called a nonpartisan primary. Typically, the two candidates that receive the most votes in that primary then advance to the general election. The Citizens for Nonpartisan Politics was established in 2011, and our goal was to encourage and support nonpartisan elections in Stowe. Our club is made up of Republicans and Democrats and independents, but together, we have a united mission, and we focus that mission on four major areas that I'd like to share with you. First, we believe nonpartisan elections will nominate the best candidate for the job, regardless of their political affiliation. And this means that you, as a voter, have better choices when you go to the polls. Number two, party affiliation and partisan politics deters our elected officials from solving problems, working together, and representing their neighbors on issues that matter in Stowe and Rock Falls. Third, by bringing together like-minded individuals, regardless of their party affiliation, we're encouraging positive progress and want respectful discourse and dialogue on how to make our community better. And finally, nonpartisan elections discourages extremes on either end of the spectrum and eliminates candidates who pander to party bosses or to a strict agenda. So if you agree with these ideals and think that selecting a candidate based on character and experience and ability instead of partisanship sounds refreshing, then I invite you to visit our club website at www.stowcnp.org, which I also think is listed on your program this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Annie. I would now like to introduce today's moderators, John Wong and Karen Monbeck, who will ask questions of the candidates, our timekeeper, Janine Case, and we also have members of the National Honor Society with us today to help us out. The following rules will apply tonight. The moderators will invite all candidates to the dais by the office for which they are running. If any candidates are not present, their representative will be introduced but cannot speak. Each candidate will have two minutes to give his or her background and qualifications. Candidates who are unopposed will be excused from the dais as they will not be given questions to answer. The moderators will ask the candidates who are opposed a general question pertaining to the office for which they are running. Candidates will have two minutes to answer. Next, one at a time, candidates will select an envelope containing a question prepared specifically for their office from a container presented to them by a National Honor Society volunteer. The envelope will be returned unopened to the N H S member. Questions will be given to the moderators, who will ask only the candidate the question he or she chooses. Candidates will have two minutes to answer. Janine, our timekeeper, will hold up colored cards indicating when 30 seconds and 15 seconds are left, and a red stop card at the end of two minutes, and then ring a bell. Any candidate arriving after his or her office has been presented will have two minutes to present only their background and qualifications after all other candidates have spoken. So that kind of completes the format for tonight. We'd like to thank all candidates for being with us and everyone else in attendance. To get us started, I believe, John, do you have the first group?
Good evening. Would the candidates for Stowe Municipal Court Judges please come forward? I understand that Candy O'Connor is not present tonight, but her husband, James Hill, is present. If he would just stand, please, to be acknowledged. Kim Hoover, what do you think is the most important issue before the Stowe Municipal Court today, and why?
My answer was paying for it. I've been judge 18 years. Last five, we moved to Stowe. When we first came, it was highly controversial. I think that controversy has died to satisfaction at this point. Right now, we've paid the construction debt five years in advance, but we are the largest court in the state of Ohio that breaks even and does not cost the city money. That will continue to be a struggle. The largest mayor's court in the District of Ohio exists in the city of Cogge Falls, where I want to call it the easy pickings, but all the cases that don't take any time, they keep and just take the money from. We get all the difficult cases of theirs, the things that do take time. The loss of probably 10,000 cases continues the threat on the financial stability of the court, something, by the way, that Stowe did not do to Cogge Falls or caused the city of Cogge Falls. That will continue to be my main struggle outside of my normal duties, but it's been pleasant so far, and it's worked very well.
Thanks, sir. I apologize for not asking this first, but would you please give your background and your qualifications for this particular office?
I began my legal career as a prosecutor in the municipal court. I was in the prime of practice of law for 15 years. I was appointed by Governor Pointovich in 1995. I have run for election three times, each time successfully. Some luminaries of our judicial system here in Summa County have been my opponents. I was fortunate enough to defeat then-Judges Tiadosio, Gallagher, and Coats, all of which have gone on to find judicial careers. I, as I say, last 18 years have been devoted to being judge of the same court, now running for reelection, the last five of which we have been in Stowe Municipal Court.
Very good. We need a letter opener next time, please. Kim Hoover, why should voters be concerned who is elected judge?
Well, the obvious, it highly impacts your family, not you at any given time. Most of the people in this room will never appear before the court, but when you do, you want to make sure the person knows what they're doing. I've handled hundreds of jury trials, I guess literally thousands of hearings over all these years, and I would hope that I've gained a little wisdom to go along with my education and just from my experience. I think that you have to have some of them reflect your community and your community values. I think, speaking for both myself and Judge Coats, we do that very well.
Thank you, Kim Hoover. You can have a seat, please. Next, would the candidates for the Stowe Municipal Clerk of Courts please come forward? What we're going to do is we're going to go right down the line. I'm going to give everybody a couple of minutes to talk about their background and why they feel they're qualified for this position. So we'll start with Frank Larson.
Thank you. Good evening. I really appreciate this opportunity by the C N P for meeting the voters tonight. The clerk of court is an administrative position. It's not a legal work, a legislative position. The main duties are being safekeeping of the court records, collection and disbursement of the monies, transmission of records to other government agencies, the fulfillment of public records requests, and also the preparation of an annual budget and living within that budget. I'm the most qualified and experienced candidate for this position because my record shows that I have been performing a position that has a greater responsibility and doing it with great efficiency. My record shows as an administrator that I put the taxpayer first. I provide better services using less of the taxpayers' money. As mayor, I am responsible for the total operation of the city, the mayor's court, the safety forces, the finance and administration of the city, the Department of Roads and Utilities. For the last 10 years, I have run the city the way government was meant to work for the people. I would bring the clerk's office into the age of modern online computer technology, providing ease to the public, attorneys and businesses for filing and accessing public records, and at the same time, ensuring the security of those records. I would also make sure that the public is served with respect and dignity by the best-trained and qualified personnel. I've worked to lower the amount of unselected funds and increase the efficiency throughout the system. I thank you, and I humbly ask for your vote this November. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Okay, Frank, here's a question for you. Kevin Coffin, would you please give us your background and why you feel you're qualified?
Thank you. Good evening. I appreciate the invitation to be here. I served for 14 years in the Ohio Legislature and had the honor of representing our area in the Ohio Senate and the Ohio House. And now I'm running my own company, Chairman of Lexington Companies, which is a public affairs and communications management consulting firm. I bring executive experience, executive management experience, which is extremely important, as well as lawmaking, which is extremely important as well. And why it's important for this in this case is because I worked very, very hard for Judge Hoover, Mayor Fritschel, and many others down in Columbus to create the Stowe Municipal Court. So I have a stake in the success of this court and in its future. The judges are doing an excellent job. They're in the black, they're running the place efficiently, they're doing the best they can to protect the public. The clerk's office is a very different story. For decades, we have been hearing from clerks, especially around election time, "Look at what I'm doing. Look at all the computerization and modernization that we're creating, we have in play, and all the things we're talking about and thinking about." And then after the election, it goes back to the way it is, which is really one of the few courts in our state that still runs on paper, as it has for a very long time. That's an embarrassment. We have one of the most modern courthouses in Ohio, and inside, it's still pushing paper around. That's got to change. So ought to be more frustrated with that. We rely on the clerk of courts to ensure that our justice system runs professionally, securely, and efficiently. And when it's not, especially in a court that I have a stake in the future, I have a concern about that. What really, we can all talk about how well we keep files, but what really separates me is that unlike my opponents, I am not bound by my political party or my political policies. Anybody who's followed the news for the last three months knows that they didn't want me on the ballot. They didn't want me to run because they're not going to be able to control me. I have the freedom to run the office as a professional, to ensure that you get value for your taxpayer dollars with professionals who are there to serve you and answer only to you.
Thank you, Kevin. Diana Kolovakio, would you please give us your background and your reason if you're qualified for the job?
Sure. And thank you, C N P, for hosting this event. We have a great turnout here tonight. Thank you all for taking time out of your schedules to come out here and meet all of us. Since January, I have been serving as your clerk of courts, and it has been an absolute delight and honor. Unlike the judge, I arrived at the building after the controversy, and it is a pleasure to walk into a beautiful, state-of-the-art facility every day. What have I been doing since I got there? I've been pretty busy. First, we had to get to know each other. I have a staff of 17 very qualified, well-educated folks, some of whom are here this evening and in support of my candidacy. And we got to know each other by going out to lunch, one-on-one, and then I shadowed each and every one of them and got to know what they did every day on the job. I quickly saw that there are many policies, many procedures, that do need revision, and I set about doing that right away. We've made many, many improvements in the clerk's office, and there are three on most of Rock Falls. The first is online payments. When I got there, you could pay a credit card payment, but only by phone. And we heard the call of our users, "We want to pay online." So we developed an online payment system with a vendor, and that didn't cost the court one penny. In fact, in the first month of usage, our credit card payments were over $10,000 higher than the prior month. I'm hoping that that continues. The second thing I'm proud of is our internship program. We're partnering with the University of Akron's Career Planning and Placement Office. We brought in a total of five interns, and they do the ministerial work that our highly-trained clerks don't have to do, leaving them the freedom to then do the work that they're most capable of training to do. And the third thing we have done is we have gone to a system of collecting a higher technological fee per case. It was $3 per case. We worked with the judges to triple it. And now that amount of money will bring in probably close to $100,000 each year, which will help pay for the technology that, yes, this court needs to go to in the coming year. And I don't disagree with my opponents. We've got to move into the next century. Thank you.
Thank you, Diana Kolovakio. Okay, I have a general question for all three of you will answer, and we'll start with Frank Larson. What do you think is the most important issue before the Court Clerk's Office today, and why?
Well, the safety of the court records is the most important, and it's going to even become more important when we go into the online filing and greater access online because the records have to be secured, and it really has to have someone that has gone through a computer system upgrade and has had the experience and knows the people that can provide the expertise in ensuring that those records are secure and that when an attempt is made to hack records, which guaranteed, some point in time, that will probably happen, that it's responded properly. I would say that is the most demanding thing, the upgrading of the computer systems and the securing of it.
Okay, thanks, Frank. I'll repeat the question again to Kevin. What do you think is the most important issue before the Court Clerk's Office today, and why?
Well, I think we'll all agree on the issue of technology and modernization, I'm sure. But I really believe that our judiciary is under assault. I agree with Judge Hoover. I agree with Chief Justice O'Connor and the late Chief Justice Moeller, who I work with closely on court modernization, that we have got to keep politics, partisan politics, and the hands of the party bosses off our courthouses. These clerk positions all too often are used as dumping grounds for party acts. We can't have that. That's the problem, because leadership is the issue, and we have to have the right leaders who have the right skill set. Again, I have the freedom to go into this office on day one and run it as a professional, not hire anyone because any party boss tells me to, not fire anyone because any party boss tells me to. Each employee will be evaluated individually on their skills and their value, and many of them may be there right now. And maybe there's some new talent out there that would serve the court and the taxpayers well in this district. We'll find that out in a very professional way and a very independent way because it's very important as we look at candidates that are being put forward for judge, candidates that are being put forward for clerk all over the state really. We have to, as a people, be very, very careful about this issue and ensure that we do what we can at the ballot box to have a fair, impartial, and independent judiciary.
Thanks, Kevin. Do you have a question?
No, I understand. Thank you. The reality is that the clerk's office does need to move forward, technologically speaking. And I've been working on that since I took office. I've been meeting with vendors. We've had demonstrations. We're looking at financing. And I have to say that although there's been much criticism that my predecessors have not gotten us here at this point, I, and of course, this is Monday morning quarterbacking, realize that it was a good thing that they didn't. The technology has vastly improved. We have technology now that is cloud technology. We may not have to house, we may not need to house as many servers on site. We won't need the amount of storage we have on site. We have companies that can host off-site. We have technology that can also measure our performance. We have no way currently in our office to measure even how much it costs per case to administer a civil case or a criminal case that goes through our system. We have no way of measuring how many cases are disposed of, how many are coming in and how are going out. These clearance-type measures and the measures of giving everybody the adequate and fairness of justice they deserve cannot be even accounted for. So I am a big fan of moving us to electronic filing and going paperless. I practiced law and bankruptcy law specifically in 2005, mandated electronic filing. I've done it. I've been there. I know how to do it. I can transition this office seamlessly to a paperless office. Along with that, what you should know about me is that I look at governance from a very comprehensive perspective. Yes, we need to go paperless, and technologies will happen, and I'm committed to working with the judges and making it happen, and I know that's what they want to. But on a larger scale, our office should also be more accountable and transparent. I'd love to go to city council meetings and give a report once a month that adequately reflects what we're doing, why our budget reflects what it does, and then it's linked to certain goals. So thank you.
Thank you, Diana. Okay, this question's for Frank Larson. Oh, excuse me, Diana. We can't pick Franks. Okay. This is for Diana. How would you make the Court Clerk's Office more efficient? Please be specific.
Sure. This does go back to the electronic filing and going paperless, but part of that process includes many gadgets, and I love gadgets. I'm used to handling gadgets at home and in the workplace. For example, we need to move to a system that's going to include metro biometric thumbprints so that the judges don't need to sign all those orders. They can just put their thumbprint down, and every order is signed or every warrant is issued. We need to have electronic signatures. We need to have cameras, scanners. We need to have security measures in place. These are just some of the things that electronic filing will take us to because it will not just come with software. A system like this that is highly sophisticated for case management will come with hardware as well. So those are just a few of the examples. Going forward, I can tell you we do many things manually that we need and have to do. I know there are better ways to do them. They do cost money, and we want to tie those expenditures to the budget and let the council know that what they're approving is more than just a blanket budget, that they actually have figures attached to certain items. We need cash counters. We need a machine that counts cash. People come in and pay their bonds with $1 bills, if you can believe that. Takes time to count cash. We have people doing it manually, but we can do it a lot easier, and we know that. So those are just a random sampling of some of the things I think we can do better, cheaper, more economically, make our office more efficient and more accountable.
Thank you, Diana. We have a question for Kevin, please. I'm going to have you hold this because this is more than a letter. Okay, this question's for Kevin. How can technology be used to protect individuals' privacy?
Be used to protect?
How can technology be used to protect individuals' privacy? I just ask the questions. I don't write them.
Strange questions. It looks crazy. You know, technology presents risks for security. There's no question about that. That's why it's important to design systems well, to have checks and cross-checks on systems to make sure that you have oversight of the vendors that you choose. Personally, I'm going to switch the question around to one that I think ought to be asked. I think we ought to have more of an in-house I T system here in this court. I've seen other municipal courts that are operating quite well and using today's technology very, very well, and they seem to have designed their own systems. I think there's a measure of security there. People can have the assurance that when their name is floating around the courthouse, and there are things like social security numbers, things like birthdays and other associated with that, that they can feel a lot better about an in-house system that's controlled by the courthouse than a third-party vendor that's maybe not being managed as well as they could. So going forward, that's an issue that I would look at when I'm elected to this office.
Thanks, Kevin. And the last question will go for Frank Larson, please. Frank Larson, what difference can you make in the Stowe Municipal Court Clerk's Office? Be specific.
Thank you, John. I think I can make the same kind of difference that I made when I took over as mayor in Monroe Falls. I brought to a city that was somewhat in a disarray, that was projected to go into a deficit, into a city that is in financial great condition, has turned into a great place to call home. I think I can do the same thing in the Clerk of Court's Office. The challenge is there to get the system working for the people and protecting the people. The security of records is paramount. With the efficiency of a system running properly, collecting of the fines, and that will help bring down the deficit. Case-management type of software is a great tool, and you can minimize the use of hours that people could use on other projects. The, you know, it's just, once you have a well-oiled machine, it runs more efficiently, and I think I can do the same thing I did in Monroe Falls. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. That concludes our questions for the Stowe Municipal Court Clerks. So you may take your seats. And I'll turn this over to Karen Monbeck and she'll have our next group come up. I didn't cut myself either.
With the candidates for Stowe Council Large, please come forward. We have Brian D'Antonio, John Verbani, Mike Fraser, Denise Tenelli. Larry Kinnon could not make it this evening, but his wife did here. Would you please stand? We're going to start with Brian D'Antonio, and he has two minutes to give his qualifications and background for his position.
Good evening, and thank you for coming tonight. I want to thank CMT for hosting this event. I'm impressed by the crowd that's here, it's nice to see you. My name is Brian D'Antonio, and I am the at-large, and at-large councilman for the City of Stowe. I have been a lifelong resident, I've worked in management for the same company for over 20 years, I've been married to my wife Lynn for the past 15 years, and we have a six-year-old son, Owen, who attends kindergarten at Fishery-Geller Memorial School. My family and I have an investment in this community, and we share your hopes for the future of Stowe. I currently serve on the Finance and Planning Committee for the city. I feel local government is more important than any, any other form of government, whether it be state or federal. Here, more than anywhere, we can make a difference. I approached during my first term has been to listen to the residents, make decisions being informed, prepared, and practical. I realize all decisions and votes will not suit everybody, but I can honestly say that I put as much thought and consideration goes into every decision and challenge I'm faced with. My main focus remains to improve infrastructure and continue to develop the services the city provides to its residents. This includes the police department and fire department, in which we have great police and fire departments, but we need to never stop improving. During this current term, we have had marked growth in our industrial and retail business, we need to continue this improvement and still strive to fill the existing unused space we have available. Employers want to know that Stowe is safe, business-friendly, and willing to invest in the community. I will bring the background knowledge and experience as your councilman to assist with this effort. I have enjoyed working with the residents, the city, and other council members, and I've been inspired by what has been accomplished during this current term. If re-elected, I will continue to work for the city and its residents. I'm asking for the people of Stowe to re-elect me on November 5th. Thanks.
Thank you, Brian, and next we have John Verbani.
Good evening. Thank you again, as Brian said in the previous candidates have said, for attending this evening. This is about three times what we had last year, and it's great to see that new people want to be involved in our community. I have been on city council for almost six years, where I've been as Board Three Councilman from 2008 to 2012, and currently I am serving as your city councilman-at-large. I'm very proud to call the City of Stowe my home. Our city has a great mix of residential, commercial, and industrial properties. In fact, you can find anything you need without leaving the city's boundaries. All of this cannot happen without progressive economic development and a forward-thinking city council. I'm very proud to be involved in all these great endeavors. I am currently the chairperson of the Public Approvability Committee, and vice-chairman of the Planning Committee, and member of Finance Committee of City Council. Before being elected to council, I served the Economic Development Strategic Plan Steering Committee, which actually led for planning on the northwest quadrant of our city. I am currently a store director for the Avenue Fresh Market, for which I've been employed for 36 years. I am responsible for the store's day-to-day operations. In addition to my business experience, I am past president and school board member of the Stone Mountain Falls City School District, for which I proudly served and still am very proud for six years. I am past president and active board member of the Stone Mountain Falls Chamber of Commerce, amongst other organizations. The reason why I tell you that this evening is, I feel it is very important to be involved in the city you reside in. The more you understand about your community, the better you can serve and appreciate its fine qualities, and that's why I am proud to call the City of Stowe my home. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Next we have Mike Fraser.
Thanks, Karen. I just want to start off by, I guess, asking for some prayers. I went and visited Sheila Gredek today, the hospital, the woman who's injured at the post office, she's in great spirits, but let's pray for her, double down on the prayers. My name's Mike Fraser, I'm serving the, the end of my second term, two-year term on city council as an at-large representative. I grew up in the Stowe Monroe Falls School District from kindergarten through 2003 when I graduated high school, number 11 in my class. I went to University of Akron to study journalism, I worked at the Akron Beacon Journal as a business writer, the Indianapolis Star as a sports writer, before deciding to go to law school. Went to the University of Akron for law school as well, and finished number seven in my class, I was the editor-in-chief of the Akron Law Review, and now I'm presently a practicing business attorney in downtown Cleveland for the law firm of Cabbage, Hamlet, and Durkin. I don't want to go over the qualifications too, too much detail, I just want to tell you a little bit about who I am. I consider myself to be pragmatic, I'd rather get 80% of what I want than go over the cliff with my flag raised high. I am, I believe I'm a change agent, I didn't run for city council four years ago, I was a 24-year-old who wanted to keep the status quo, I ran to mix it up, and I believe I have. When I took this oath of office four years ago, and I took it again two years ago, I swore allegiance to one group of people, not of special interest, but you, the people, the average resident, the person who gets up in the morning, sends the kids off to school, works to meet the mortgage payment. You're the people who I serve, and I fight every day to serve you. Just really quick, I'll say, a couple seconds left, I just want to say a couple positive things about this city. We, I love talking about how great Stowe is when I'm up in Cleveland, people in Cleveland must think Stowe is like paradise, because of how much I talk about it, but we've got great people. I think the city council I'm a part of has done a banging-up job, and I want to specifically commend them, and I have to stop. Thank you.
There's more.
Thank you, Mike. And next we have Denise Tenelli.
Hi. There's something a little different about me than the other candidates, it's, I'm not an incumbent. So to give you a little background, it's not that I'm new to Stowe, I've lived here for most of my life, which is over 40 years, and we'll kind of leave it at that. I grew up in Stowe, I've been married to my husband, Dan, for 32 years, we have three wonderful children, we're all Stowe graduates, we love it here. We, I started out as electronic technician some time ago, and that turned into a small home business for me that I ran as my children grew older. I became an educational aide, and that's where I found what I love. A little bit later in life, I went back to school and I became a teacher, I had my bachelor's and master's degree in education, and I love what I do. I'm not looking for a new career, I'm looking to serve the community that I love. Right now, the things that I do in my classroom that make a difference, I actively seek out the involvement of my families that I work with. I think that's really important. When you contact them, you have the partnerships that work, you know what people want, and you understand what they need. We've been homeowners here for over 30 years, and I've paid taxes, and I know what it means to live on a budget. I'm fiscally conservative because we had to be at times, but also because I believe that's how we should be, I was raised that way. And I believe that if you have extra money, you save it for a rainy day, and you don't spend if you don't have to. I also believe in community involvement. I'm co-president of CMP, as a matter of fact, because I believe that there are things that need to be changed within the political system. I am chair of the Safety Buckets Project as part of the Lions Club, Adopt a Spot, Heroes' Day in May. One of the things that I feel that I could bring to council is just a fresh perspective, and I appreciate if you consider me, voting for me.
Okay, thank you, Denise. And now each candidate will answer the same general question, and we'll start with Brian D'Antonio. Okay, the general question is, what do you think is the most important and challenging issue currently facing the City of Stowe? As a council member, what would you do about this issue?
Thank you. I might hear the same answer four times around, I don't, I don't think anything's changed. The biggest issue is our fiscal responsibility or the, or the budget. We know what we want to do in the city, we know what we want to improve in the city, it's, how do we, how do we budget and what, and what comes first? Obviously, I, we've lost, the city's lost a lot of money from state government, everyone's aware of that. And there's been a lot of cuts in the last three or four years, but currently, we, we're at a point where we actually need to, we need to grow the employees that work for us, and we need to, I don't want to steal anyone's words here, but we, we need to start a team from the bottom up, because whether it's aging or retirement, or it was just strictly cutbacks, I think the city struggled to be able to, to replace those people, but to build that team back up. So we have quality roads, so we have infrastructure that everyone wants, there's not one person in this room who hasn't complained about a road in Stowe at one time or another. It's sad, sometimes it boils down to running a city, but the roads seem to be the most important thing, and they are to me as well. I think it's, it's a frustrating thing when we don't have that. So I think the budget, or budget constraints, and how we, how we pick and choose and where we spend the money is the most important thing. And that includes, number one priority still needs to be the safety forces regardless of what's going around. We still need police, and we still need fire, and it's, it's a big issue to me, because I said it before, I want to raise my family here, and there's nothing, nothing I fear more than my family not being safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian, and we'll go to John Verbani. Do you want me to read the question?
Please, if you could.
What do you think is the most important and challenging issue currently facing the City of Stowe? As a council member, what would you do about this issue?
Again, Brian is correct, the number one, and I think it's not just in Stowe, but in any community that you live in the United States today, is the budget. That is very, very important, because it's easy to cut on one side, give to another, but when it comes down to the end of the day, you have to have a quality of life issue. That is why people live in the city that they reside in. Does it meet the needs of their citizens? Do we still have leaf pickup? Do we still have proper police and fire? Do we have the proper park and rec system? Do we have things to where we can go ahead and enjoy our community for what it is? And as I said before, it is very important, because if you look, and my wife and I were talking about this the other evening, you don't have to leave Stowe really to find what you want here in the city, and that is very unusual. And again, that ties back to economic development. Economic development, like I said, is also important because it brings the money in, and we, we don't have to go ahead and make cuts. Nobody wants to go ahead, I believe on council, wants to make cuts and, and do things that people are harmed by. By following through with an economic development policy, and also watching our budget very closely as we have, I think that is how we will achieve this. And that's what I believe is, the budget and economic development is probably your major goals in this city. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Would you like the question to be?
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to give you three major issues, and they've been, all three have been addressed already. The budget, neighborhood roads, economic development. Budget, we have had four straight budget, five straight budgets now that have been unbalanced, we spent more than we took in, that has to end. I have voted against four of those, everyone that I've been on council. We have to draw the line and say, no more, let's spend within our means. Two, neighborhood roads. I'm out there knocking on doors, talking to many of you folks, and that's the number one thing I hear, and yet it's something that gets completely overlooked from budget time. We have to make, have needs to put into the roads. Over the past five years, we've taken away $4.7 million from our neighborhood road reconstruction and repair program. It's, I mean, the proof's in the pudding, if you take that kind of money away, you're not going to have good neighborhood roads, it's that simple. We have to refund the road program. Third, economic development. As I stated, I am a business attorney, I work with executives, decision-makers in corporations who employ people. The City of Stowe is highly dependent on having employees and paying income tax to the city. We need to spur economic development, I know how to do it, because I'm with these guys every day, and men and women every day, and I know what it, what attracts them to a community, I know what spurs investment. So those are the three issues that I have been actively, if you've read the newspaper or attended any city council meeting, you can't dispute that I have actively fought for all three. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, and next is Denise Tenelli. Would you like the question repeated?
No, that's okay. It's kind of interesting, because I've heard the answer three times, and I agree, what do you say as the person who's answering it? But I would add this, I think that one of the things would be, as I've gone and talked with many, many people, everybody kind of echoes those things, but the single most important thing is what's important to you. Each person comes before council with needs, and we have a lot of different things that we need to balance, you balance businesses against residences, and you, you're really making a lot of decisions. So one of the things, and I think certainly what's going on at a federal level, that we really need to look into, is not only what are the problems, but how do we solve them? So if we, even if people seem to know the answer, if we're not working together, if we're not actively listening to each other, then we're not solving those problems. Active listening, there was a quote that said, "Most people do not listen with the intent to understand, they listen with the intent to reply." And one of the things we do, we need to start understanding what the real problems are, we need to actively talk to each other, we need to listen to each other, because I don't think anyone out there would disagree with anything that we said. We all want the best services, we all want to pay no taxes, who wouldn't? Who wouldn't? But it all comes down to those decisions. I'm very research-based, I believe that, we need to look at facts, I need, we need to actively go out and find more facts, more answers. And we need to do that, then, with the idea that we're looking to make this community the best place it can be for everyone.
Thank you, Denise. And that ends the general questions session, and now each candidate will pick, and will have a question. Mike Fraser will be first. And your question is, what is your long-term vision for maintaining property in order to alleviate areas of blight?
Wow, that's a loaded question. To, to say that Stowe has areas of blight might be a stretch, I think, I would never say that our city does. We have some areas that, that need extra attention. We, and by attention, I mean, have more police patrol, certainly infrastructure changes, improving the structure, the quality of the road, sidewalk, putting streetlights in, all these things make residents feel safer, improves the aesthetics of a, of a neighborhood, and that's certainly important to a lot of the people who have invested their life savings into, into our town. I take the responsibility very seriously when I go into a city council meeting on Mondays or Thursdays. I understand there are a lot of people who are at home, who maybe don't even know city council is meeting, don't know what city council does, but they trust us, and they have entrusted us with the power and the responsibility to make sure we do things right. And really, I, I pray as much as I can that I have strength and the reminder that that's a huge responsibility, it's not to be taken lightly. As far as blight goes, I, I can't say that I have a better answer for that, we don't have a lot of blight here, and I think that anyone who lives in a neighborhood that would be, that would be referred to as blight has the right to be very offended by that statement.
Thank you, Mike. This question is for Denise. What is your position on the income tax increase for police, and why? Ouch.
Boy, that, you know, that's a, that's a tough question, it's a good question. I'm a teacher, the income tax directly goes to safety of schools, and so it's kind of interesting to me that that question comes to me, but I will tell you that, as a teacher, I'm afraid that the proposal won't be able to keep us all completely safe, there are a number of ways of getting there. It's almost two separate issues to me. Do we need extra police? I would like to see extra police. We have enough now to react to the situations that are, are happening, however, we do not specifically get to be proactive with, with what we're doing. We don't actively seek out things and try to prevent what's happening. So for me, my position on that is that I do believe that we need more police, but I wish that this particular instance, it was not tied with the schools. So I think that's left to each person to kind of decide how that, how they feel that that works for them. for them.
This question is for John Verbani. What is your opinion of regionalism? Be specific and give examples.
I believe, first of all, you have to start at home, which we already have, and I'll broaden that. The administration and city council in the last two years has done a tremendous job of cross-trading employees. This is, and I'm not sure if I've got the right number, it might even be higher than this, we're approximately 46 employees shorter than what we were two years ago, or three years ago, through attrition. And we are working smarter, not harder. And I think, looking at that with regionalism, I think that is something that has come to fruition. I know that we have done this as far as with the City of Kent and different cities surrounding us, with different things as far as repairing our roads, looking at sharing some of our administration with other cities, and I think regionalism, whether we want to believe it or not, we can still maintain our own identity as a city, but I think it's very important, again, as I go back to that saying, how we spend our money. If we can save money to go ahead to invest, as my other candidates have said, in roads, in police, in park and rec, that's where your money is going to go. So again, regionalism is very good as far as that's concerned. We are only on the tip of this, and I believe that we can go a lot farther, but also keep our city with its own separate identity. Thank you.
Thank you, John. This question goes...